It's 5:30 and I will call this meeting of the Alpine City Council to order and we will have our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the calling for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored in Texas land, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. And Jill, we have a...
Yes, we do have a forum. Mayor Ramos is not present. The notice of this meeting was posted on October 15th.
And next we'll move to public comments, but before we have any, I'm going to read this little part on the preface page to our agenda that's changed a little bit, I think. Remarks will be limited to the public comment and public hearing portion of the meeting, limited to three minutes per person in accordance with Texas Government Code, Section 551, that's dot zero zero seven, and Attorney General Opinion Number KP dash zero three zero zero. For public comments, please speak into the microphone located at podium, etc., etc. So, do we have any public comments?
First up, we have Jerry Davis.
Yes.
Do you want to make a comment tonight?
No, I'm not if you want.
Okay, no, that's fine. All right, thank you. Okay, next up, we have Mr. Rick Stevens.
Sure, Rick Stevens, Ward five. I would note that while you read the appropriate comments and the, and the agenda, the city council does have a lot more latitude than it's given. It's very clear that you've chosen to limit the public comments to that three-minute period, and you're really not interested in getting any feedback from the audience, because of all the comments I've made, I've never gotten a call from any of you on any issue. You're not allowed to speak during public comment, and you're not allowed to speak during public hearing. So you've certainly made a change in the agenda that you like in your approach. The law does give the city council a lot more latitude than it has taken. It has chosen not to. I think that's a change.
Any other public comments?
No, that's all.
Okay, then we'll move to our report section of our agenda, and we have a city manager's report on the sanitation survey results.
Yes. Okay, um, as I discussed in the past, we're going out for an RFP for sanitation services. It's been kind of an item of discussion over the past several months with our current vendors, the current costs, what expectations we have, what services we want. Instead of renewing the contract the easiest way, we are going to go out for a full-blown request for proposal with a list of everything we'd like the city to be provided in regards to the sanitation services, the recycling, bulky pickup, and really what our options are. It also allows other competitors to come in and possibly underbid, overbid, they kind of compete with each other so that we honestly get the, the best deal for what we're asking. For about two weeks, fifteen days, actually eighteen, because I forgot to ask you to pull it down, and we had a survey available, and we did put it on the radio and the paper, tried to make it as public as possible. Judy had asked what my goal was. My goal was a hundred responses. I was shooting high. And it is new to try and get the, the citizens involved besides through social media, but to get that input from them as, as what do they want, what do they need? We had sixty-nine individuals respond. We asked the basic questions. Do you live in Alpine? Ninety-one point three responded that they did. If they paid residential or commercial. Most do pay residential. We had a little bit of commercial, and we had some that responded that they covered both. These are important to understand, because our commercial rates are significantly different than our residential's. They are significantly higher. They're by dumpster, by pickup, and by whether it's a recycle or it's, it's just landfill waste. The big question, the one that, that is focused on our RFP is, do we go back to our, not go back, do we go to poly carts, the individual ninety-six gallon carts? Or do we move forward with dumpsters again? Seventy-three point nine percent responded with dumpsters. This is, of course, the public feedback. I think most people are kind of on the fence about, do we do poly carts? We really like design for it. We don't have that sidewalk. We don't have that, that place in our yard, me included. I'd be putting it in the gravel and praying that a deer or a hog didn't knock it over. But dumpsters did win. Out of that, it was kind of interesting, because those who responded to switch to poly carts, only fourteen percent of them wanted to pay more. So one of the things that we've discussed for years is if the city went to a poly cart system, it would be more expensive. So it's good to know that dumpsters did take the lead. Of course, no one wants to pay more, totally understandable. So when you're looking at your current rates, eighty-one point two percent didn't want to pay more. And it broke down, we kind of gave a generic zero to ten dollars more a month, ten oh one to twenty, kind of broke it down in increments of nineteen ninety-nine, or ten, I'm sorry, nine ninety-nine, and thirteen percent were willing to pay a little extra. And the other part of the survey, besides just the dumpster and were you willing to pay more, was the do you recycle? So this one was important, because our current contract has a, a brief section that basically describes that they will help run or, or manage the Health Landers Recycle Center. Currently, our current vendor will go out there and empty the roll-offs that are out there and utilize that recycling for their business. They, they ship it off to companies that will recycle it, or they keep it and bundle it up and hold it until that market increases. So that was kind of an important question. Is this something that the city needs to continue to utilize? Sixty-eight percent do recycle. And then, as we get into the more colors here, it was interesting to see how many and how often people recycle. The majority never recycle that responded. Remember, there's only sixty-nine responses. But then you have twenty-one percent that do it every week, eighteen percent do it every now and then, or about once a year. You have seventeen that do it once a month. I thought this was a nice capture of a little bit of everybody. It wasn't, you know, one way or the other. Of course, which method do you prefer? Do you prefer to pay more to have it picked up curbside, or do you enjoy using our recycle center? The majority, majority did say they enjoy using our recycle center. To, to provide a little information on the recycling center, it is managed by city employees. If you haven't been out there, we have one full-time employee, Adalina Bill, who is our environmental coordinator, and then we have two part-time individuals who manage as everyone's coming in and out. When they don't have a flow of residents, they do utilize and they crush the grass or blast. So if you're out there and you need to get some arts and crafts, we have beautiful crushed blasts. If you have a tree that falls and you need to dispose of those limbs, as long as they're not thorny, you can take them to the recycle center, drop them off, we mulch them, and then you have free mulch as well. So these are two things that are kind of our hidden gems, but they are available to the public. The other big topic besides the dumpsters is bulky pickup. We've had a, I call it a rash increase of illegal dumping. It has become more noticeable. We are working on this, but I wanted the public's input as far as, I mean, how often do you want this? Sixty-six percent do use bulky pickup. I think it's actually a lot more than that. Once they're educated and understand, okay, I've got to call in this month, I forgot, I have to wait till the next quarter. Or do they realize you actually can take it to our recycle center, and we now have extra roll-offs for you to dispose of it there, so you don't have to illegal dump? How often do they utilize it was interesting. Once a year was, was the lead with thirty-seven percent, and then every quarter was eleven percent. But when I asked the next question, how often do you think it should be available? The majority with forty-six percent said monthly. They would like to have monthly bulky pickup, which is something we'll put in our RFP to have options. Do we go to a monthly system? Do we go back or stay with a quarterly, a biannually, and look at those breakdowns that the vendor would provide? This was my trick question. If you don't use the bulky pickup services, how do you dispose of larger household items? One person admitted to illegal dumping. We do not have, I, I didn't ask for emails or anything like this, so that there's no way to, to call them out, but they were honest. And that is good to know, that traditionally, I just put it by the dumpster. As you can see, most of them, they don't use the service. Sixty percent was in a, that they don't utilize that. If you don't use the bulky services, how do you dispose? That was, I'm sorry, my last one. Illegal dumping is an ongoing issue, and it will continue to be an issue. We are currently addressing it in-house. We have worked out a deal with TDS. We do provide locations, and we are collecting the data as far as the location, the address. Is it something that code compliance can, can deal with? We've asked individuals to use the online form to submit, to request, you know, hey, my neighbor just dumped a couch out there. I witnessed it, so that we have the opportunity to follow up and educate the person who did it. Our goal isn't to go out there and reprimand everyone. It's really to educate them that there are available ways to do it without making your neighborhood look just unpleasant. When you drive in, you see it everywhere. If you drive through the area, I drive home and I can tell you four dumpsters, that there's illegal dumping by all of them. So we really wanted to know what kind of thought the community had as far as, would you be willing to spend more to address the illegal dumping? Ideally, the increased bulky pickup from quarterly to monthly, which we're averaging about a five-dollar estimated increase, is what people would prefer. They would prefer that we have the opportunities to have the bulky pickup more often than hiring someone to address it, than increasing, well, second or third place was the additional cleanups. Adalina's focus is the cleanups. So this one kind of gave us a really good idea when we go out for the RFP to include, do we, do we ask for extra services, like they need to address all the illegal dumping? Do we ask them to do the monthly pickups and have it scheduled a little bit differently? So when we put this RFP together to present to council, all of the, the feedback will be part of this RFP. We won't ask for the dumpster poly cart comparison. The majority and several council members have said the dumpsters currently. Of course, we'll look at, you know, how long do we want the contract? You know, what, what's going to be available as far as the recycling, the bulky pickup, the illegal dumping, the locations of dumpsters, the types of dumpsters, how do we increase and make our city look better with their assistance? Our current vendor has a huge program that, you know, that they focus on, you know, we're, we're good for the environment, but we want to make sure whoever we select moving forward is good for Alpine. So I wasn't disappointed. We, we did get a good mix of responses as we move forward and do different surveys and we ask different questions. We're hoping that we'll get the public more involved. We will take different avenues as far as, you know, maybe getting it better in the paper, having copies up front for people to pick up who don't have the computer access. For the first go-around, we tried to utilize an easier form, and of course, populates and calculates everything for us. We're notified automatically when people respond, and there's so many different ways to do it. This was just the first go-around for, for us, and kind of excited to, to get people respond. I don't know if I can take comments from the public yet.
Does the council have any questions for Maggie? Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie, for putting it out there so the public can respond.
And you will have the results on the website so everyone can see.
Then we'll move to our city staff update, and Judge Cole is going to give us an update on the municipal court.
Good evening, council members and everyone. First, our court clerk, Ms. Chapman, will show a PowerPoint, and then I'll follow with any questions or concerns after she shows you information. Ms. Chapman?
Good evening. I made a small presentation that covers the time period between September of last year and September of this year, but some slides will address more wide time range for a better perspective. So I will start with the financial part. This is court's revenue from September two thousand twenty to October of this year. The jump in two thousand twenty can be explained with Union Pacific fee of twelve thousand dollars, and the decrease in August, in September, can be explained with my absence in August, but I didn't have a constant work. And we're also transitioning to the new payment system and court, and everybody is still getting used to that. The improvement is slow, but it's obvious as seen on this slide. The first square shows the revenue from two thousand twenty, including the twelve thousand dollar fee, and on the second slide, you see the revenue for two thousand twenty-one, and this year is not over yet. Plus, we didn't have outstanding fees, and it's already higher. So I think it's obvious that there's an improvement. Next set of slides will give you a general idea of what has been happening in court. Blue, blue graph is a pending cases. The amount of pending cases increases, but the amount of dispositions increase also. It's orange graph at the end. In October, we disposed four cases than would date in any other month in a previous year. And can we have the next slide, please? This is different dismissals. Orange is trial dismissals. Blue is pre-trial dismissals. So people who contacted the court before their court date and paid their fees or were dismissed because they were filed in error. In October, there's a jump, because I was doing a cleanup on stale cases. Some cases were paid and supposed to be closed, but they were not updated in the system. So I just changed the status, and that's why there's an increase. Also, the gray part shows a compliance dismissal, and this is an important thing to pay attention to, because it means that there's a lawful behavior, which is the main goal we have here. Also, the next slide, please. We're wound up important, another important thing to talk about when discussing dismissals. It started today, and it will take care of cases for more than fifty people. So we had a court today, and there was fifty-four cases on the docket. Thirty of them got disposed, and another six were given an extension. In addition, five people were brought in with warrants, and that took care of twenty cases. Next slide. This is the changes that do not show on the graph. So what changed? All files are digitalized and organized. When it came in, there was no paper trail for anything. There was no documentation. So now everything is signed, sealed, prepared, and in order. They're also digitalized. We also started following old procedures, improved records. We followed up on all the reports for state agencies, like Office of Court Administration. We also have, having a regular court twice a month. We have three emergency hearings. We had requests for three jury trials, which we haven't had in years. We're still working on the jury trial process. And as I mentioned previously, we transitioned to the new state, sorry, to the new payment system and court. We're still getting used to that, but we'll see. So far, it's supposed to be more convenient for defendants to use that than the payment group that we used before.
Thank you, Ms. Chapman. So in your packet, I also included a recommendation letter that we got from the Office of Court Administration when they came out and audited our practices. And I wrote you a report that showed you where we're at, and we've made progress even since last week. So there were some outstanding things. We actually have a dismissal docket that we have today that we started using, and we had informal show cause dockets when we had people brought in in the court roundup. And I'm, I am going to approach everyone about an APD court handout, because what we want to do is when someone gets a citation or code violation, they have easy information so that if they want to take care of their responsibilities, it's simple. And that, so that when we have our court, we refine the process. And I couldn't be more pleased and proud of our court, and every member in it has done so well. And we started before there was a transition to new leadership with Ms. Wilson and everyone in the first crew, and we've just taken that and steadily improved with time, and we've just been steady, and we hold court when we need to hold court, and we're predictable. And it is exciting, some of the things that we're doing. We're able to have emergency hearings when there are animal cases, and I've seen Mr. Potten do a wonderful job. And if there are any questions, what, the only thing I did want to clarify is that when I was hired in my contract, I was developing pre-trial diversion programs, and I was working with Ms. Wilson. And what, what pre-trial diversion means is that there is a plea agreement, but the person does not plead guilty, but they fulfill commitments that are required, that are classes, and they often have to pay the fines and court costs as well, and then the case is dismissed. So I want to clarify, we're not just dismissing cases without allowing people to take responsibility. And all of the people who were brought in from the warrant roundup were incredibly polite, and they took full responsibility of what they needed to do. And I just couldn't be happier about how court went today. So do you, do we have any questions?
Pro chairman and council, I do want to add that I think the, the municipal judge is doing a great job, and that the attitude I've seen from the...
I have a point of order, please.
I think the attorney can speak.
We are hearing from the judge.
I know, but she asked for questions from the council or the attorney.
Did you have a question, sir?
As I was saying, I've, I've noticed that during our municipal court, which we were having steadily every two weeks, the, the court is handled very professionally. The civilians, the defendants that come in are very respectful of it. They realize that their cases are being heard professionally, and I just see a different attitude that people seem to appreciate the, the way that municipal court is being handled. I think it's a good thing for the city of Alpine. Okay, Chris, your question?
No, I was calling a point of order, because he's giving a statement, he's giving a report. We were hearing from the judge. The judge was the one that was giving a report. He said he had a question. You said he had a question, and he didn't. You asked me if I... I do have questions for the judge, but I guess I'll wait until information and discussion so that we can discuss.
Well, we're at that stage of the agenda. She's finished her presentation. She's asked the council for questions.
Do you want to move that up, or there is something on three under information?
So we do have a separate item for the item that Council Rodriguez added. So if you don't mind staying, we can...
I certainly do not mind staying, and I'm happy to answer questions and hear concerns.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
My apologies. Okay, then we'll move to the consent agenda, which there are four items on the consent agenda. The approval of September the twenty-first, twenty twenty-one special meeting minutes, the approval of the excused absence of Councilman Sondarte from the October twelfth, twenty twenty-one city council meeting, approval of the visitor center assistant job description, and approval of the executive assistant job description.
Sir, I would like to pull out number two, three, and four.
Should I flip that into forming a motion?
I move that we pull out number two, three, and four.
Is there a second to the motion? Hearing no seconds, and the motion goes for the lack of a second. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda in its entirety?
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda items.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I think there are a few things. Number one, I guess I wanted confirmation that the visitor center assistant and the executive assistant job were included in the new budget. And it's also kind of hard to vote on excusing absences from council members when there's nothing that specifies on the charter what we can excuse for. So if we don't have guidelines, I don't know how we can decide whether it's an excused or non-excused absence.
Megan, do you want to address the budget issue on the items?
Both items are in the budget. Thank you.
So we are working on the rules of procedure ordinance, which would actually put guidelines in place. But currently, the charter reads that an absence must be excused by the council, so I mean, will, the council will need to excuse it somehow, until then, until that happens.
And is it fair, though? I mean, we don't even know why he was absent. I mean, is it fair to do that when there's no guideline such it?
I mean, well, the council can certainly wait, you know, consider the ordinance first and can go from there. Just per charter, the absences should be excused by the council.
Do you want a discussion? I call for a question. All in favor of the motion say aye. And opposed? Three, four, and one opposed. Then we'll go to the information and discussion items, and then number one is discussion and presentation of Tri-County Broadband Survey by CRSCS of Connected Nation, Texas.
She's actually joining us via Zoom, and she'll be discussing some of our additional options with broadband. Big Bang Telephone has, of course, initiated the NTIA grant, and there are other options, and she wanted to kind of give us a presentation on what all was available out there.
Hi there. And do I have the ability to share my screen? Do you know?
Yes, you do.
Okay, perfect. Okay, can y'all, can y'all see my screen? Perfect. Well, my name is CRSCS. I'm a broadband solutions manager at Connected Nation, Texas. And y'all might have heard Connected Nation, Texas floating around your county earlier this year, because we were working in partnership with the Tri-County Broadband Alliance to secure some survey feedback from residents, businesses, and ranchers, farmers, government entities. Any and all of the above were invited to respond to the broadband survey. And so that might be where you have heard the name Connected Nation. So I work for Connected Nation, Texas. We are the statewide subsidiary of Connected Nation, which is celebrating its twentieth anniversary this year. Very exciting, and we have been engaged in about six hundred and fifty communities across the country. But we're adding three communities to that growing list, which is Brewster, Jeff Davis, and Presidio Counties. So I'm very honored to be here, to be able to present to all of you, and to be able to talk about what we found through our, through our broadband engagement efforts. So I will jump right into what we found out. I just kind of want to note that this is a document that we put together for, for all three counties. There is a kind of a, a table of contents, if you will, if you're ever looking at this holistically. We've outlined it alphabetically, so Brewster comes first, Jeff Davis comes second, and Presidio comes third. But you will be able to kind of locate it as you go throughout and know which county you're, you're working with. But we've identified kind of some key, some key census data points up here at the top. But what we really kind of engaged in the community was, we wanted to understand the availability of broadband infrastructure, how residents were adopting and using broadband services, and what steps would have the greatest impact toward improving broadband access, adoption, and use across the local sectors. That's really what we were trying to get to the heart of through the community broadband engagement. So between February and June of this year, the three counties collected a combined total of seven hundred and thirteen household respondents, which is really incredible. It really allowed us to be able to dig into the data and put together a community action plan that was informed by granular local data directly from your residents, business owners, ranchers, government entities, public safety entities. I, I will say this, we don't usually get a whole lot of great feedback across the board sometimes in some of our communities, but really and truly, the Tri-County area really stepped up to the plate. So I hope everybody who responded is really proud of these efforts. So as we move throughout the document, I'll do my best to highlight just what we see in Brewster County, as I know that that's... as I know that that's kind of where all of you are located. So let me skip forward a few pages here. So this is kind of a brief introduction to some of the survey results that we have. All of these survey results also live later in the document as well. So I like to kind of call this page a snapshot, it is an overview. But as you'll see, we we have about 80 point, or let me back up. I should say we have about 80% of households in Brewster County that have access to broadband. And really and truly, what we see with this is this is data that was released in 2021 in July that Connected Nation gathered in conjunction with providers. And we worked also with the FCC from Form 77 data. And I'll get into that a little bit later, but I'll move down to that second bullet point. But for households that said they do not subscribe to home internet service, the top barriers that they cited were one, internet services too expensive. And two, we do not know enough about the internet to feel comfortable using it. So combined, we see that cost in digital literacy are the leading barriers to broadband adoption per the survey results. And we see about 80% of households in Brewster County have access to internet speeds and to run many modern applications. And we're defining that at about 100 by 10 megabits per second. And that threshold can run about 10 devices at any given time. This is, this is the time where I usually make the joke and I make fun of myself of I'm one person and I can run any, I'm, I run a lot of devices from my cell phone to my laptop to gaming devices, to my smart TV. I mean, my, my dog even has, you know, a Wi-Fi connected device. I have one of those cameras where I watch my dog and I shoot treats out at him, you know, and I can talk to him. So I'm one person and at any given time I have five to seven devices running. So when we start talking about husband and a wife and a kid and two kids, you start needing to have extra bandwidth to be able to accommodate people being able to to have quality of life, whether it's work from home, school from home, telehealth, FaceTiming and Zooming, you know, grandmother or grandfather who lives in a different state or a different county. And we move down to the next bullet point. We see that Brewster County households pay more on average for access to the internet, so about $77 per month than we see in our other connected communities. These are other communities that we have engaged with across the country. Nearly four out of 10 households and 50% of businesses report that they are dissatisfied with their current internet service. The top reasons for dissatisfaction being slow speeds and high prices. And more than four out of five households, or I should say more than eight out of five households, I'm so sorry, that's a typo. So they would like to have improved or additional options for home internet service. So I'm going to skip down here a little bit as well to take you further into some of that mapping information that we talked about. And but what I really just want to point out here is all of this information that's available on this page and the page right here, all of this is publicly available data on our Connected Nation Texas website. We've linked it all right here, for example, if you want to see it, and then as well the page before. All of this is publicly available data. We update it twice annually in July and in December. You can go and view all of this directly for your county and get the latest and greatest from the providers and from the FCC. And we've sourced it directly to our website so that you don't have to go scouring the internet to find this information yourself. And when it comes to broadband mapping, we believe this is really the first and most important step to accurately understanding who has broadband and who doesn't. Because when we understand where broadband is and where broadband isn't in terms of infrastructure, we're really able to dig in deep and really start tackling that digital divide. And so that's why mapping is really important to us and why we update it twice annually. I'll take you a little bit further now through the results that we have for Brewster County. So if we talk about the adoption rates, I'll define adoption for you as folks who are subscribing to broadband. For example, do you have internet at your home? Do you have, do you have AT&amp;T, you know, do you have a monthly bill and you pay AT&amp;T? Then you would be adopting broadband, you would be a subscriber. So 72.5% of residents indicate that they have broadband via a fixed connection, which is the likes of cable, DSL, fiber or fixed wireless. Just shy, just shy of 10% have non-fixed, which is dial-up, satellite or mobile. And then nearly one in five residents is saying that they do not have connectivity at their home. So we asked this 19%, we said, well, if you're not connecting at your home, tell us why. Why are you not adopting? You know, we want everybody to have broadband, so to tell us why. 34% of folks said they're not adopting because it's too expensive, we have an issue of affordability. We had 10% of folks tell us that they're not adopting because they can't access it. It's not available to them at their address. And then the other 56% of folks, we kind of had a smattering of other responses. But contributing to the other 56%, we have 24% of residents who said they're not comfortable using the internet. An additional 6% of individuals said that they do not own a computer at their home. So if we talk about cost, 2% of monthly income is a recognized standard for measuring the affordability of a home internet connection. So 2% of the median household income in Brewster County, if you'll remember back, I kind of talked about the census data on that first page. The 2% of the median household income comes out to about $78.47. So just under that is what Brewster County residents are reporting that they pay on average per month about $77.14. So we're, we're pretty on target for that 2% threshold. But if we skip down to that next graph that you see in the middle of the screen, and we're asking folks, well, what are you paying for? You're paying $77 a month for what? And you're paying for a 24.82 megabit per second connection. So for a 24-megabit connection, you're just shy of what the FCC actually deems to be broadband. The FCC deems broadband to be a 25 by 3 connection. And, and that's running about three to five devices at any given time. Again, if we use me, if we use me as the guinea pig here, if I'm using three to five devices, my dog's using one of them, which leaves me about two to three for myself. So that's my laptop and my cell phone. So you, you folks are all welcome at my home, but the only form of entertainment I can offer you is to watch the paint dry or the grass grow because I've got, I've got no bandwidth to offer you at 24 megabits per second. So you can, you can either take my dog's camera offline to hook up your cell phone or we can watch the paint dry together. And that's what we're looking at at this 24-megabit per second connection. So we asked folks, we said, do your internet, are your internet needs being met? 61% said yes, and 39% said no. And the folks that said no again pointed to the slow speeds, high prices and unreliable connection. And we asked them if they were interested in additional choices. And by and large, about 85% of folks said they would be interested in an additional internet choice at their home. And I'll, I will switch gears just slightly here, I've got two more data points for you. About 60% of folks in Brewster County are using a mobile device throughout their household, which is, which is a pretty good subscription way across the, across the board for mobile connectivity. It's a little lower than we see in other, in other counties, but again, pretty good. And then about one in five households report that they rely on their mobile connectivity as their primary or secondary source of internet. And, and then the final data point that I have for you all is telework, which is about 68% of folks across Brewster County indicate that they are teleworking in some capacity. 21% of those folks telework every single day. And an additional 23% are teleworking several days per week. Usually when I talk about telework in presentations like these, the feedback that I get is, I knew telework was on the rise because of COVID-19, but I didn't know it was that much. I think a lot of ways the COVID-19 pandemic has really shifted how folks work. You know, teleworking used to really kind of be this, oh, wow, you get to work from home. And now telework is very much so the norm because we've, we've shown that it can work in a time, you know, at the height of the pandemic, it was in some places the only option that people could continue to work. So that's what we see here in these teleworking rates. So that's what we see across the board here for, for the results. What we did at Connected Nation is we put all of the information, we took all of this data. And we have a lot of great teams from, from policy, research, development, geoanalytics. And we've put our heads together and we came up with action items for all of these, all of these data points that would basically have the most long-term impact for your community and for the Tri-County region as a whole. And the first one that we have is centralizing broadband leadership in the broadband council known as the Tri-County Broadband Alliance. And I mentioned a TCBA earlier because most of you were probably aware of it and might even serve as part of TCBA. Because mainly what we see TCBA doing is taking kind of the mission that they already have, which was getting, spreading the word about the survey and the importance of broadband and just refocusing efforts to really kind of now move the ball down the path of we, we have the, we have the data. How do we now shift gears a little bit to be more focused on grants and infrastructure and workshops and resources and continuing to take advantage of this once in a lifetime funding that's happening for broadband at the state and the federal level? Because that's exactly what's happening is we see Texas finally showing up to talk about broadband. We have a state broadband office. And we also see things like the infrastructure bill at the federal level, at the federal government. And we want to make sure that Texas and specifically counties, you know, like Brewster have a seat at the table, but more importantly, have a seat at the head of the table and are really able to dictate the needs and the wants of their residents are being met by ensuring that resources are being allocated appropriately. And so as you go through this document, for the sake of brevity, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on to goal number two. And because you all can read this document and we can make it publicly available for those of you who need it. But goal number two is leveraging the community assets and strategic partnerships across the county to bring access to unserved and underserved areas. Again, a big part of that is somebody mentioned the NTIA grant from, from BBT. That's laid out exactly in this action item. And a big part of this is just understanding that slow speeds will be always be slow speeds until there is additional infrastructure that's brought in to change that. And we just want to make sure that the county is made aware that there are programs that exist. There are grant programs that exist, there are grant programs that have providers already coming into your county. And so it's just important to understand that serving unserved, underst- underserved, easy to reach and hard to reach homes, a big part of that is conversations and partnerships with providers and understanding that you have the data that supports that need directly. And I will end with the final, with the final goal that we put out, which is the free and reduced cost services that are available to folks, not just in Texas, but across the country. But something that we, that we think is very important based on the data that we've received. You know, we talked a lot about the need for affordability across this action item, whether it was in data or whether it was reflected in the census demographics. But there are programs such as the Emergency Broadband Benefit PCs for People in Lifeline that are explicitly meant to make broadband affordable. And at Connected Nation Texas, it's our, it's our ideal and our hope that people would be able to get connected to broadband regardless of their situation, regardless of where they live. And that a barrier such as cost would not be what prevents them from being able to engage online. So we've outlined a lot of that here in this document. So I will also share with all of you that all of this information will be publicly available on a portal, Brewster County will have its own online portal very soon. And probably before the end of the week, possibly beginning of next week. But I do think it will be before Friday, where you'll be, you'll be able to read all of this information, access an interactive map and see the full survey results for yourself. So there's a lot of information that I didn't touch on during this presentation, but you can go and read all of it for yourself as well. So I will, I will stop sharing my screen, but I'm, I'm happy to answer any, any questions if that's allowed. If there's, if there are any, I would be happy to, to answer those at this time.
Y'all have any questions, Laura?
I know.
Well, thank you for your presentation, I appreciate it, and the council appreciates it.
Thank you, thank you so much for having me, have a great evening.
And then we'll move to item number two, which is discussion and presentation of the Chisels Brewery and purchase of City Alley by Guy Fielder. I think you're Guy Fielder, right?
Yes, sir. So we made a presentation to the ADA.
You want to step up to the podium?
Sure.
And your son can go with you if you prefer.
He's also my brewer.
There you go.
We made arrangements with Gio to show, basically replay a video of the Zoom meeting that we had with Mr. Street and the ADA. And I think it does a great job. Well, the point is, we want to introduce ourselves. There's a lot of talk in the community, there's a lot of gossip. It's kind of like CNN News, got a lot of subscribers and it's mostly wrong. So we want to put, set the record straight. So, and I can talk a little bit more afterwards. But again, the point of today is not really to address the alley. I'm not completely prepared for that, I don't have an appraisal. But it's to introduce you to who we are and why we're here. Okay?
So tell me a little bit about this Chisels Brewery project that you put together.
How much you want to know?
Well, not all night, but just an overview or a thumbnail of, I understand you're going to brew craft beer?
Yes, sir, we're, we're going to brew craft beer. This, as I said, this is my brewer, it's also my youngest son. He and I, mostly him, has been brewing beer since he was 17 years old. I've been enjoying it since he was 17 years old. Our family enjoys craft beer to the point that we make special trips to Europe, to go to Belgium, to go to Germany, to go to England, where craft beer is at its finest. But our goal here, part of our goal is not to sell just good beer. One of our goals is to provide a great experience. Chris and Jim tell me that 800,000 people pass through Alpine every year on their way to Big Ben. We want to give them a reason to stop. And that brewery is going to be part of it. But the brewery is just the beginning.
Stop in Alpine, not stop coming.
Stop, don't just pass through. But the brewery is just the beginning. One of the things we hope to accomplish tonight is to arrange to have a meeting with each of you council members. You're a little bit hard to get to sometimes. We bought three properties, so we're in three different wards right now. So, but we want to talk with you, we want to talk to you about your vision for the future of Alpine. How we can grow the economy, the things we can do working together. So again, the primary reason for tonight was just to introduce you to what we envision we're going to build.
And you, are you anticipating like a nationwide distribution of your beer?
Not in the beginning, no, sir, we're, we're, I'm, I grew up where you fund your growth. Borrowed money will usually get you in trouble. So we're self-funded and if we grow, we'll grow with our profits. So our profitability and how much you folks are willing to drink will determine how fast we can grow.
Well, if you can get 800,000 visitors to, to spend $1 at your craft brewery, you should be real fast.
Start, yes, sir, and spend the night.
Yes, sir. Does the council have any questions for Mr. Bill?
Just to note that the video is about to start.
Oh, okay.
Okay. And I'll, I'll answer questions.
First, we'll answer tentative plans, they're going to change. But we're really interested in, in getting your input today. So who is Chisels, it is the three of us. Let me give you just a little bit about our bona fide, so you know who we are. Tim Fielder, our son, has a PhD in computer security with an emphasis in cybersecurity. I don't even know what that means. But he loves brewing beer and he's been doing so for years and years. And this is really his dream, he's a man of few words, so I'm speaking for him today. He grew up mostly in Austin. Guy Fielder, my husband, is an Aggie. Guy and I grew up in Pajus. We moved away for college, lived 21 years in Houston, 20 years in Austin, moved to Midland about four years ago because we wanted to get back closer to home. Guy is an Aggie computer engineer. He actually helped develop the first portable computer in the world with Compaq way back in the day. I have undergraduate in English and a master's degree in architecture, but my career has been as a nonprofit leader. I've written and received probably, I don't know, somewhere between 35 and 50 million dollars in grants. I'm a really good grant writer and I am committed to writing grants on behalf of the Murphy Street remodel or, or Renaissance that we have been talking with John about for several months, we're very excited about it. Here are our goals in Alpine. To invest in Alpine. Not only a brewery, Tim has purchased a house on North 14th Street. Guy and I have purchased a house on Salt Ross Street. We intend to make a significant investment in Alpine. Not just for ourselves, because of course we want to have a successful brewery, but for the city. We love West Texas. John and I were in the same class of the Tierra Grande Texas Master Naturalists in 2018. I've been co-president of that. Guy is the VMS administrator for it. He came through the class of 2019. So we've been involved. Guy and I went to Salt Ross here for a while. A couple of years ago, my nonprofit had a contract with Salt Ross to help their students stay enrolled in college until they graduate. We had significant success there. So we have deep roots in the region and we're committed to it.
So that's pretty far back. I don't want to date you too much, but you've seen Alpine way back.
Yeah, we were here in the school year 73, 74.
When they sign kitchen posts out in front of the cameras.
We were only two at the time. We want to participate fully in the life of the community. We want to be part of it. We want to participate in the Murphy Street things. We want to participate in the events that come. And we're looking for guidance from you about how we can help. We don't know what events go on here. We don't know where we can add value, but we really hope that you will help us understand that. Sponsor some events, for instance. We want to promote Alpine. We are going to have marketing firms who help us not promote not only our business, but all businesses here. We hope to work at a state level and generate good publicity for an area that we feel very strongly about. We don't want too much tourism, but we want enough to increase prosperity. We want to contribute and most of all, we want to listen and learn from people who have been here, who have deeper roots than we do, who know the ropes and who can advise us. As you know, we somehow backed into the Richie property in December when we had, Guy and I had COVID and could not be here to actually understand what we were getting into. And we hired an architecture firm out of Austin. Their name is OPA and I believe this is the 43rd brewery that they are designing. So they're real experts in brewery, which has lots of complicated plumbing leaks that I don't want to learn about. And this was their original concept for that property. It included a brewery building here that is mostly steel, plating steel, a taproom building and a garden. I'm very grateful to Jim Street for facilitating our purchase of a different property. We had actually made a run at it before and gentleman had indicated that he had no interest in selling. But we're so grateful that you helped that happen. Without Jim, we would still be planning to do this. As it is, thank you, Ann, for purchasing the Richie. Let us know how to help you. We are behind you 100%. We have purchased a property one block east that Al gives us additional space. It means however, that we've had to go back to the drawing board about our plans. This was the original concept for how a brewery and taproom might look. It has changed dramatically from here, of course, because now we have a different configuration of the lot. So we're going to have to change it. And I want to let you see what Opas thoughts were six months ago. So this would be the front elevation with the taproom in front, the brewery behind, the garden in front, and this is a roof garden for nighttime viewing. This is a different view. So you're seeing the, the taproom on the left, the brewery on the right, the mural at the back behind the stage. A different view of the covered part of the garden and a different garden. So this is the basic concept that we began with. Now, this lot has a very different configuration. The buildings won't fit together in the same, in the same way. And we thought this was a great opportunity to look at the brewery in a different way. So I want to show you sort of what our concepts are. These are aspirational. We're heading in this direction. We don't have final plans yet, so we don't know exactly where we're going. But we want you to understand what it is we're aspiring to. This is our desert chic ethos with the desert country colors, the desert theme. We're a part of this desert. We love this desert. We want to promote it. This is the type of taproom we're trying to build. We want it to be a world-class facility, something that Alpine can be very proud of. We want to make this available for meetings, free to nonprofits, available to anybody in the community who needs to meet. We want it to really be a gathering place for the community, open to all. We do hope to include all parts of the community and bring people in by, by having signage and things in English and Spanish and Spanish-friendly festivals and things. So we really want it to be a place for the community. With a beautiful garden with water features that is park-like, that brings people in. They don't necessarily have to be brewery patrons. It will be open to all. I believe there may be food trucks nearby, perhaps on our property or others. People will be free to bring food over here as long as the food truck owners help clean it up. There will be children's gardens so that it's family-friendly for everyone. We also want to combine desert chic with what we love about British homes. Some of the dark woods, a library-type feel, perhaps a separate area that is quieter for more conversation, sort of like our favorite pub in the world, the Churchill Arms in London. Most of all, we want to brew great beer in a great brewery. We're very excited about getting it started. We'd like to hear from you what opportunities they are. How can what we do, bringing this brewery in, really in the middle of downtown, help support all Alpine businesses? We have good friends here like Kathy Wright, who is a classmate of John and me in the Tierra Grande, who has guest quarters. We've stayed at the Holland and loved it. We really want to help increase tourism and traffic for everybody, not just for us. Of course, we want to benefit too, but we want everybody to enjoy. What else, how else can we support the citizens? We certainly think bringing attention to the South Side and some historic inequities and city planning help make a difference. We want to support John's work any way we can. Certainly happy to rally the local businesses and write grants and do research about that. I know that, that there's always money available if you approach it in the right way and plan it and put your proposal together well. I have never worried about raising money. Where can we make the greatest contribution? I think you, Chris and Jim mentioned to Guy about providing beer at Cowboys games. To the extent that that is a value-added, right? I mean, that's certainly something we will talk about and consider. We have to have the capacity to do so, to produce the beer and to have the worker bees who will sell it. But where do you need us? Where can we add value? Where can we support you? So that the whole community benefits from what we're doing.
If you recall, you were involved in the discussion as well. I said, I thought that our liquor license was going to restrict us to geographic location. And you said that there's a rider or a permit or an application that we can get that allows us to go to the stadium, allows us to go to the art walk, allows us to go to other locations.
And the particular one that we've been struggling with is, is the midweek mercantile, which is our weekly event. Now, we're going to be revisiting that for this next fiscal year. You know, our season ends in November and then we'll see what form this, does it still fill a need because it started in COVID, then we're answering the need for outdoor activities? Do we continue it if so, what form? But if we do, a live music event without a beer concession is, is limited in a way that, you know, it would be a lot better and more people would come and stay longer if they can have a drink.
I will tell you on the QT that Tim has got some stuff bubbling over there already in anticipation of you and me.
John, John has seen our pilot. Great, we're coming on the 28th.
So glad to hear.
And we're helping, we're supporting Abby's plans for Christmas. We're excited about that. So I mean, we really want to be contributors here. We're not here to exploit this town. We're here to add to it, to, to make our home here, to make it better for all of us. What should we avoid? What should we plan for? What else do you need from us? We're learning and we're very open to any of your suggestions. Here's something that we're running into. This is our new line. And this is the knot alley. That's a 16-foot alley that would sure help us to be able to advance to take advantage of this for more garden space, more park-like space. Perhaps food trucks. We're not really sure what. We have to get the architects involved and we'd like to hear from you what the need is. But we have an opportunity. If we had this extra 16 feet, it would help a lot for us to move buildings back and have more open space.
Yeah, historically, I've never been used as an alley and it's blocked by utilities. So.
So.
No utilities on that alley.
Just that one at the end.
Right now, we're trying to work with the city and the local property owners to understand if we can purchase that knot alley to expand our property into more garden area. What we're struggling right now is everyone in Alpine is that there is no more building inspector. The building inspector has left. So it's hard for us to understand clearly from the city what the building requirements are so that we can tell the architects. Right now, they are completely on hold pending word from us or from the city about what the parameters are, where the setbacks are, what we can build, how many parking spaces we need, all that kind of stuff. So if, if we can understand how to work with the city to get this information, it can move us forward. And finally, we are not yet ready to ask for permits, but eventually we're going to need that. And we need these things to happen on time because we are already 10 months into our ownership of a property in Alpine and we still have no clear answers. So all of these delays are delayed for everything.
I had breakfast with another person that's trying to do something in Alpine right now. And when you submit a permit and a request, it takes three to five months for the city to respond. And that's just absolutely unacceptable to anybody in the business that is trying to get something done.
Anyway, this is who we are and what we're doing. Guy's willingness is here to take notes. If you all have suggestions for us or ideas, what, what else can we do to support Alpine and to support you?
Y'all have any questions? I guess Guy, you'll be the spokesman. If y'all have any questions.
Is there anything that we left unsaid?
So you are at the point where you need us to work on getting a building official to meet with you?
The, a building official and understanding the codes and the requirements. We have a good understanding, we think, of what is required. We actually built custom homes in Houston for a while and we dealt with probably one of the most draconian code enforcement cities in the, in the state. So, and I'm not implying that you will be. But it under, if, if we start with the expectation of meeting the requirements and the requirements are defined, then it's a much smoother process.
What kind of, what kind of input are you getting from the neighbors? Have they been pretty eager to, to work with you?
Most of the input we've gotten has actually been very positive. Most people miss Big Ben Brewing. They like to have a place to go after work. And like we were saying in the presentation, we want to build a very warm and a very welcoming. If you've ever seen the TV series Cheers, where everybody knows your name. Another thing that we're playing on is, again, I mentioned that we spent a lot of time in Europe drinking good beer. The pubs and taverns in Europe are their social gathering. They had social media before we had Facebook or Twitter or any of that because everybody gathered at the local pub after work.
Will you be, will you have access to, to be used as a venue, say, for weddings or anything of that?
Anything, we're, we're, we're up for anything. And as Lisa mentioned in that, she and I have almost 20 years in the nonprofit, both supporting and organizing and running. And we will sponsor nonprofit events at the brewery and share some of the sales with the nonprofit that's, you know, putting out, putting on the event.
I think it's a wonderful idea. Y'all seem very prepared and know what you're doing, you know?
Well, and again, I've learned, I'm 68 years old. It costs more to do something right, but it costs less to do it twice. So we've got great, I'm sorry, it costs more to do it twice. Sorry, this one. I did go to any of them.
We were forgiven, yeah, for that.
We are bringing in professional engineers from Austin and from San Angelo. These, as, as the architects, we are, we were going to be their 43rd brewery. I think they are designed too, since we hired them. So we may be their 45th brewery. But we've also bringing in professional engineers to do the MEP, mechanical electrical plumbing. They also have worked on many breweries in the Austin area. So we're, we're hiring the best we can find. We're hiring a branding firm. We're hiring a marketing firm. Once we get to probably four months of opening, we will start a marketing campaign. We're sparing no cost.
Well, I'm hoping that we can facilitate making that work.
Well, we all are. And, and like, like Lisa said, we're not here as interlopers. We're not here as somebody to take advantage. We're here to become part of the community. You know, we're very active with Tierra Grande. I know I can get you volunteers to work at the recycle center from Tierra Grande. You know, Tierra Grande was very much a part of the Night Sky ordinance that y'all recently passed. Lisa and I were participants in that. We want to become part of the community. We don't want to take your position. We want to be the workers because that's what we do best. That's why we want to sit down and talk with each of you and figure out what we can do to move the dial.
Well, if you're here at the end of the meeting, I for one will, would like to make arrangements to meet with you.
Great. Thank you.
Well, thank you for, and Lisa for the presentation and the thanks you framed up. That was very good. Then we're going to move to discussion item number three, and my apologies to Chris for not having remembered this was on the agenda. But this is a municipal court update, including the number of cases pending, number of cases disposed of, and disposition and dismissals and reasons for dismissal.
First of all, bear with me, some of this, trying to get information, the procedures. I have had quite a few questions on exactly how it works and those type of things. So bear with me, even though I might know the answers to some, I just do want to visit on some of it. On the dismissals, Alexandra mentioned that on the dismissals prior to court, those were mostly offenders that came in and, and made arrangements to take care of it or that type of thing. Those are called statutory compliance dismissals. And when a court user complies and shows proof of compliance, then there is a, a legal mechanism that provides for that dismissal. And those are by statute, not every, every kind of case allows for that. So are there any other cases under that category that are dismissed by the court that are not compliance? But say, look at, let's look at October. There was 36 dismisses by the court, three by the prosecutor, and seven compliance dismissals. So there were only seven compliance dismissals. There were 30, 32 other dismisses. Well, and I don't expect you to know exactly what, but what could be some of those other dismissals that are accounted for and dismissed, dismisses prior to?
Well, sometimes there are deferred adjudications where someone has to complete their, and show proof of compliance. And those afford a dismissal and some after a period of a certain number of months. If they've complied and they haven't picked up new cases, they're entitled to that dismissal as part of their sentence.
Right, but aren't, aren't deferred adjudication listed under compliance dismissals?
Not necessarily. And what, your questions are good questions and what I'm trying to do is make it so that the files have more documents. When I arrived, sometimes there were not files that existed and sometimes the file had nothing in it. And so there we have rules for dismissals. And what's very important is that because we are not a court of record, it's important that you're able to look at the public filings so that you yourself can see, hey, what was this dismissal for? And you should be able to go look. And so we have started using new forms to make sure to document every step so that we have transparency and you can see patterns. And I believe that you have some of my new forms in the standing orders. And so what I want to let you know is that all the procedures that you're asking about are in the earlier standing orders. And what happens is as we gain experience, we refine our practices and I'll create mechanisms and I'll create mechanisms for solutions for issues that we have. And today is a good, I'm actually very grateful that you moved um our update to today because I can uh discuss how court went today. And in court, we used our new forms for plea agreements and jury waivers. And something that was happening, I will never hide issues. I always think it's good to be transparent, look at issues and accept them and then make decisions and good choices about what to do next. In the past, long before most of us were here, court users were not warned about their rights to a jury trial, even with these kind of citations. And so now on these forms, it is very specific that people are waiving that right. And we have something called first appearances or arraignments regularly. So when we have a brand new case, the court user comes to court, reads the uh, I read the the nature of the case and make sure that they understand that nature. I take a plea from them. And then if they plead not guilty, they have an opportunity to visit with our prosecutor. Now, we had to refine our practices there. We, what I do not want is that cases get resolved before I take a plea.
And they don't speak to the prosecutor before?
There, that was a practice that occurred before Mr. Ponton came back. We have ended that practice, that is not allowed. The, that was occurring and we have stopped doing that. We now have arraignments for every case. And it's only then they that they can work with a prosecutor to come to a mutually beneficial plea agreement or not. And they can plead guilty to me and I can assess the sentence and I can do a deferred adjudication. Or they can have a bench or jury trial. And so that is a choice, but they're getting the warnings now. And make sure that I do not leave here without addressing stale cases with everyone. That's something I want to, okay, good, I want to make sure that we're gonna talk about that.
On your pretrial diversion program, do you have guidelines on on what offenses are are able to be used in that or?
Right now, those are left to the discretion of your city prosecutor. That's up to you to decide if you want to have guidelines and have that kind of input to work with your city prosecutor. I will accept them as long as they are reasonable. And I have added conditions to it.
So the pretrial diversion contracts come to you to be?
Yes, and now they also are going to be in every file. So every case that is disposed of, when someone is signs a plea agreement, the defendant, the city prosecutor, they have to sign it and then I have to approve it. We put it into the file. And then after the conditions are satisfied and the amount of time passes, then we, the person, we can revisit that and see exactly what the deferred prosecution conditions are. And that's been, that's our new form is, today is the first day we use the new form and that helped us all tremendously. So we don't have to try to remember what the conditions were, it's plainly stated.
And what are, and you're inactive cases? Those seem to be carried month and month, once again, inactive cases?
So there is an issue that we are going to need to address. And that is, and it is a perfectly normal issue that many small counties are and cities are addressing right now, which is this backlog of what we call stale cases. And I start, the first uh city prosecutor I started working with was Ms. Wilson. And so we had cases going back, I can't remember how far. There were some cases that were just never disposed of. And there was, there were times when there were no prosecutors and there were times when there are no judges. And so we became aware of this situation. And we've made it some game plans about how to deal with this backlog. It is inefficient to carry that kind of backlog. And we are changing our practices so that it does not accrue again. And so if you look in your packet, there's a standing order about a stale case purge. And so we have a lot of work to do with this first purge. And we're set to do it in January. And what I'm anticipating is I'm gonna tell you about it and provide you um or Mr. Ponton, your city attorney, will have information for you so you can make decisions accordingly. I have written into the standing order that if Mr. Ponton submits many dismissals at once, going through the cases, that if they are older than two years, I will accept that in one um in one motion from him. And Ms. Wilson was having to do them one at a time. And she will sometimes submit them this thick. And so that's somewhat impractical. And so this, I was actually working with Ms. Wilson right before she left about this. And now we're stable and can pick right back up. I have, uh, in my standing order, I have said that the second court date of January, I will accept a motion for a purge or the prosecutor can object. So I am just the court and I have my hula hoop, which is to take action. I am not going to dismiss cases, suis fonte is what we call it, on my own. Your city prosecutor will come to me about handling these cases. And I I am providing a mechanism with the stale case purge. And every year we would do it. Or and the next judge will have this rule. And if they follow it, this will prevent that backlog from accruing. And these cases, there, they have some problems and I stated that in the standing order. And so um another alternative, and I'm gonna put this out there, is that if if we, we are going to start having also a dismissal docket to address if there's a s- an inactive case, I'm going to have these show cause hearings where Mr. Ponton explains what's going on with this case, what are we doing with it? And he will have to put it on for trial or move to dismiss it. So we have cases, right now, Mr. Ponton, going back to twenty fourteen, by law, any case that it is older than one year is presumed to violate the speedy trial constitutional rights. Ms. Wilson was focusing on, she was concerned about statute of limitations issues. So there, what I want to do is make sure that we're moving cases. But what I've recommended in my standing order, if someone has cases going back to twenty fourteen, but they have a new active case or new active cases, that we not dismiss those, but put them all together so that when we bring this person before us, they can factor all of that in. W- we see what's going on with their cases. So people aren't just getting free passes if they're continuing to get in trouble. But as I've I've explained in detail, some of the issues that we have, we have deceased defendants. We have people who are juveniles who are now adults. And some, the cases are just moved, the people have been gone for so long, we can't track them now. And so, but I'm available to help in whatever way you would like. And that includes if you decided, I recommend that we do a stale case purge. Another alternative is that you pay me extra and Mr. Ponton sits with me for two or three days of full court and we go through a dismissal docket. And I'm willing to do that and we work through lunch. So if that's, if that's something that, but that's going to be up to you to decide. And I can give you information, but I will, when when we're set for the stale case purge, Mr. Ponton will tell me what he would like to do, if he'll object to it or if he'd like to to purge some cases. And I would like to come back to you um the first meeting that you have in January so that you can ask questions and let me know what your thoughts are. But you'll express your will through your city prosecutor. But I, it's inefficient and not good to have so many cases. When it be current on these cases, they're just a backlog. And now things are flowing, it won't back backlog like that again. But I don't want to keep kicking the can down the road.
How many cases do you hear, do you have on on a on any docket?
We have, how many cases did we do today? Thirty?
Thirty, there's more than a, there's more than a hundred on the docket.
And we have new rules. So you see in the new standing orders and we we were flexible with people because we needed to get our side of the road clean and get our court operating and get the rules standardized. We expect now compliance from community members. And they may miss one court date and we will give them another court date. If they miss a second one, we file what we call uh failures to appear. And that's when we do our warrant roundup.
About two or twelve people came in on warrant roundup today.
And they were very.
They came in voluntarily with police officers.
No drama. It was just business and they handled what they needed to do. And I couldn't be more pleased with them taking responsibility. When we have court regularly, I don't think we'll have as many people who we would need to assist to come in. But we will uh require responsibility. We're not gonna enable community members um not to take responsibility. We want, we have a court, we want them to come in on their court dates.
With our pending cases over two thousand and and you know, there were new cases come in every month. And you're wanting to get it in within a year. Do you, do you think we're gonna be able to keep up at at the pace that we're going to be able to get everything heard within a year?
I do think that we will be able to. I think that we will start flowing so that we can finish cases and have a trial if that's what they decide within a year. I do. And that's my hope. Um, and so I would like a clean slate for Alpine and that we not get backlogged. And then there are people who want jury trials now. And so Alpine does not have, that I know of, unless you do know of, and please let me know, something called a jury plan, which is how we select juries. And we're gonna do it by the by the book. And so uh we have assistance from our woman, from um Ms. Woodfinn, and she's a wonderful woman who has helped us all the way through. And she's helping us with a jury plan that will be your responsibility to decide if you want to accept or not. And we can keep resetting, we have, I think, four or five cases set for jury trial. And we have time to reset those until we get our jury plan in place. But that's important that that we, and once we get that plan in place, it will not be intimidating. I myself am intimidated about the process, but I'm I'm addressing it with assistance, with people who know how to how to uh make that plan for us. And once we have it, the next judge won't have to do that.
So for someone that has to take it or something like that, would your advice be for them to go to the courts prior to being placed on a docket, to go ahead and try to see their standing orders for their offense and try to take care of it that way?
Well, I think it's important in our standing orders are on the computer, on the court side. Or can we?
Too sure to be on.
So those I do, I would like that we would make that publicly available because they're written as instructions. So I want to make it very easy for people. When people have a citation, and this is why I want to have a handout for people when they get their citation, that they do have the opportunity to go to the court. And now we have regular hours. And people have the opportunity to plead guilty and pay their fines. Some people do that. And so, but if they're going to contest their case or they want to negotiate, they need to come to their court date and get their arraignment. And then they can do that.
Thank you. Uh, well, thank you for your time. But once again, I I'm sorry that last week I I tabled it, but I didn't have the information I needed to be able to to visit with you about it. It's very obvious that you put in a lot of work with the court, much needed work. And I appreciate it. Seems to, things seem to be running a lot smoother than they were three, four, five years ago. And it does sound like you have a lot of work ahead of you, but uh I'm sure you're up for it.
Well, I appreciate all of your help with this process too. And it's a pleasure, I love this community. And I want our court to have good orderly direction. And I want it to be the court that opinions deserve, not good enough. One that that really functions and serves the community's needs. And I'll do anything I can do to help on my end. Okay? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
We'll move to item number nine, which is our action items. The first one is approved resolution twenty twenty-one dash ten dash eleven, a resolution awarding the Women's Club of Alpine, Texas, the annual mountain country Christmas event for two years. And I would entertain a motion for that.
I'm at the motion with approved resolution twenty twenty-one dash ten dash eleven.
Second, second. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
The second one is approved resolution twenty twenty-one dash ten dash twelve, a resolution authorizing the city to participate in an agreement with the state of Texas through the Department of Transportation to request the closure of North Highway one eighteen between Holland and Evan and Eve on November nineteenth and twenty. And I would entertain a motion for that.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash ten dash twelve.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? Now, call for the vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And then we'll move to item number ten, which is our city council member comments. Start with you.
Uh, I'd like to thank Megan for putting out a little thing to the public so that we can get public input. And we do need that. And I don't check if it was over dimmed or not. Thank you.
Chris?
My comment?
Sarah? Martin? Again, I would like to apologize to Chris for not seeing discussion item number three. Now would entertain a motion for a gentleman.
Motion will get there?
Is there a second? All in favor?